Good evening.
I'll keep my comments brief. I'm a resident of the city, five years. I'm going to venture to guess that people who've come up here in support of the Transit Center don't live a half mile from it like I do. I lived there with my wife and three kids. We've enjoyed summertime walks to the nearby Dairy Queen, Target, the other stores down around the Transit Center without fear of drug dealers, panhandlers, people carrying weapons, people wanted for larceny, et cetera. I'm going to disagree with the gentleman who was up here from the Railroad Commission. He retired out as a police officer for 28 years. I'm a current police officer of 21 years, a city near here that I'm not going to state for policy reasons, but we have a lot of problems with our Transit Center. All the things that I've mentioned, we have problems with, considerable. We're down there all the time. We have to think of the neighborhood's stability for the neighborhoods that are close to this Transit Center. There's no buffer between this Transit Center and a residential neighborhood that's a block away. Most Transit Centers are in the middle of a downtown area, commercial area, and therefore they've got a buffer. You've got an excellent police department here. They take care of business and everything else. It's one of the draws that got me to this city, quite frankly, that along with all the other city services, and I'm saying that as a longtime officer. But I'm just telling you, you're going to regret it if the Transit Center goes in there. It's too close to a residential community, one that I call home, one that I would like to live in for another 20 or 30 years, and I don't want to face crime issues in another couple of years down the line here and say, boy, maybe we should have studied this a little bit more. At minimum, I would ask you to chair some sort of committee to look at crime trends around neighboring Transit Centers and say, is there an increase in crime around this Transit Center? You know, I think that would be at least a fair thing for your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jutelis?
Hi. Good evening. You know, I really wasn't, I wasn't planning on coming here tonight. I've never been to a council meeting. I am an executive with a large organization that has a large facility here in Troy, and Troy's been my home for the last 10 years. I purchased my home about 10 years ago. I thought Troy was a diverse and progressive community. My sisters are here raising their families, and we're Italian, and Italians stick together and like to be close to one another, and it's that commitment to family that brought me out tonight. You know, I read about your comments. Actually, somebody emailed them to me, a friend of mine who lives outside the city, as a joke, thought it was funny. And I came home tonight from work, and I turned on the TV, and I put on the station that shows this meeting, and the more I heard, the eloquent speeches, and I just felt compelled to come out to make sure that you understand that your words and what you posted on Facebook puts at risk the most important parts of our family, which is our youth and our children. And you're a public official. You have a certain standard that you do need to be held accountable to, which is different than somebody in the private sector. Your words embolden bullies. It's a communication that children in schools, when they see that, they're going to feel justified to take violent actions against youth that are different than them. I saw that, and we all went to school. Did you not see the children who were teased and called fags and who were continually bullied and beaten up? You've added to their anguish, and that upsets me immeasurably, and I felt compelled to come here and tell you that tonight. And I didn't think I'd be this emotional either, but my next comments are directed toward the council and to the Troy electorate. You need to hold her accountable to some sort of action to redeem this situation, if that's education, if that's, I'm not saying that you have to go to some sort of gay pride parade, but something that demonstrates to the youth in our schools that this type of communications is unacceptable. So I expect you to hold her accountable. And you know, I didn't vote in the mail race. I have no idea who you are. I have no idea who your competitor was. This isn't about that I'm some part of anti-T Party movement. I'm not. So I just need to state that as well. And then I want to close with a quote that I couldn't remember precisely, but I felt compelled to look up before I came here to this meeting. And it's something that was stated by Eli Weiselman, who was a Holocaust survivor, who won the 1986 Nobel Peace Prize, and this is really directed to you, council members, and to the Troy electorate. The Nobel Committee called him "the messenger to mankind," stating that through his own personal experience of total humiliation and of the utter contempt for humanity shown in Hitler's death camps, as well as his practical work in the cause of peace, he had delivered to the world a powerful message of peace, atonement, and human dignity to humanity. And what he said upon receiving the Nobel Peace Prize, and once again, this is directed to you, council members, and to the Troy electorate, and why I'm here tonight, "I swore never to be silent whenever and wherever human beings endure suffering and humiliation. We must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented." I encourage you all to take sides, you and the electorate, and I encourage you to make some sort of amends, more than an apology, which is not adequate, and I hope that after everything you've heard from me and everybody else here tonight, that you realize that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, that concludes the people who have signed up for public comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? If you'd like to come up. I believe you've already spoken.
I actually was cut off early, and I did sign up to speak again, mayor. Through the miracle of Facebook, I was cut off with 3 minutes and 30 seconds for...
I'm sorry, how many minutes?
Three, it was around 3:30.
3:30, okay. I'm sorry.
I don't have that much to say.
Okay. If you'll please step forward. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council. My name's Sandy Forrest. I'm very tired and very hungry. I'm tired because I worked all day here in the city of Troy, where I've worked for 13 years, and when I left work, I didn't go home and eat my dinner. I came here because this is important. I came, there were so many people, I couldn't get in this room, so I waited in an overflow room until there was a break, people had their say, and they left. They went home to their homes, to their dinners, and I waited. Why did I wait? Because this is personal, Janice. When you say those words about people out there, you're talking about me. You're talking about me. I work here. I work for a big retailer, the biggest of its kind in the world. Our store here in the Troy, in Troy, is very successful, even among, even in our company, for the top. I don't want people to boycott my store. I get a profit-sharing check when we do well. I work hard so we do well. I bought stock in my company. With that stock, which I sold last week, I'm going to buy a truck. I have a purchase order from the Troy Motor Mall for a brand-new Chevrolet. I'm not going to go buy it yet because I'm waiting. I want to know, are you going to do the right thing? Are you going to take a stand against this? I want to know personally, and I intend to tell everybody that I know. I'm going to go home tonight, and I'm going to eat, and I'm going to sleep, and when I wake up, I'm going to watch the news, and I'll be on Facebook, and I'll be all over the Internet, and I want to know, did you take a strong stance, or did you just wait until the line got short and the time got late, and you let everybody go home and you let it go under the rug? Because you know what? You've got a choice now. You're elected officials. You're leaders. Take a stand, let the world know, because you know what? This room may be getting empty, but the world is watching. I have friends in LA, I have friends in New York. They all know what's going on right here. They're going to be waiting to see, how do you deal with this? What do you do? And yes, I take it personally. I'm a gay person. I take it personally as a gay person who was beaten and left bleeding in the snow at 12-years-old because somebody thought I was a faggot. I heard those words, and I've lived in fear. I will not live in fear anymore. I will have my say, and if you think that you have the right to say things like that about gay people, I'm here to tell you, we're not going to put up with it. Troy Motor Mall, Somerset Collection, Target, Home Depot, you don't think we shop there? You will find out. We're waiting to see how you handle this, and trust me, the word will go all over the place. This is not a joke to me. This is personal. I've never done anything to hurt you. Your words hurt me. Your apology, I was, I was watching to see if you apologized, and I was glad that you did, but it didn't sound sincere, Janice. It sounded like another slap in the face. It sounded like that guy saying that he kicked my head in because he thought I was a faggot. That's how it felt to me. I don't think you really get how it feels. Show us that you understand how this feels to me and to all the people that shop or don't in Troy. We're watching.
Thank you.
I will keep this, I will keep this brief. My name is Dr. Ellen Kite. I was talking before about microaggressions, and I don't actually blame you for cutting me off because it was pretty academic. I wanted to say that I'm very proud of the GSA community that showed up here today and the youth that are inspiring community and the sense of connectedness that people have. I'd like to speak just a little bit more of that. I think that that is where we need to all be in community in order to move forward through something so painful, because the idea that there are us and them groups, or that there are special interest groups that somehow want to change the way people are thinking, we want to be treated equally, and to say that everyone has the same rights is simply not true. And that is why you have so many people who are here speaking and people, and I've spoke as an academic. I'll say that I've had, I've had people call me dyke when I was just walking down the street with my girlfriend, not doing anything other than walking down the street with my girlfriend, and not even holding hands with my girlfriend, which I think I should be able to do. I've experienced a lot of pain. It was very painful for me in the midst of planning my wedding, which I never thought in my lifetime I would be able to have, and I have to go to another state to get it. To be planning my wedding with my partner of almost nine years, who I intend to spend the rest of my life with, to read on Facebook that someone's just going to disdainfully toss away a bag because now queers can get married. I'm here, I'm queer, I'm not going away, and neither is anyone else who's shown up, and I think that we all need to come together as community and just confront the hateful speech. I do not say that you're a hateful person, but the word, the word is a microaggression, and it just, that's what we need to not tolerate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Daniels, in the committee.
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jack Miller. I'm a resident of Birmingham, Michigan, currently living in Royal Oak. I came here today because I go about my everyday life looking at people and wondering if they have hateful feelings towards me. There is nothing in my life that I have done that hasn't been something that I've been proud of. And being gay has never been a big deal for me. It's never been anything that I have, that I have had to worry about until now. And it's strange to me that this is happening now, because I'm 25. I've been out for about 10 years, but all of a sudden, I feel like I walk around the streets and I look at people, and they make me wonder if they think I'm equal to them, that what I have to say is equal. It's my own insecurity, I suppose. I'm not saying I'm ashamed of who I am. I'm proud of who I am, as Jack Miller. But when I hear words like yours, they make me question myself, and I don't need to question myself. So I just want you to know why queer, in the way you used it, was more than just a word. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Grix? Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Grix. I've been a Troy resident way over 25 years. I think if, I think in the back of everybody's mind, if you had to vote for the train station, the Birmingham train station in Troy, the residents of Troy would vote it down. These are hard times. The kids and the adults need the Troy Library. We have the money. We've greatly inflated our reserves despite the growing better economic terms in almost every sector. I'm saying, open the library seven days a week as soon as possible. We have the money. We should be more progressive, like Sterling Heights, which actually has cut a little bit into their reserves, rather than greatly inflating the reserves like you've done here. They've cut into their reserves, and their great status, their bond rating, is not affected at all. We need two things in this community, the library for the kids and the adults, and the other thing we need is protection. We're too thin at police. We're way, way down. Every time you can bring back another officer, it's going to help. What does the dispatch unit do in Troy when all the cars are committed and somebody calls on their phone and said, "I need help," or they're screaming, "I need help"? We need more Troy police officers, and I think we could get it if we cut back our reserves to the way it was just a year ago. An economic forecast, three years in advance, is a guesstimate. Some would say a wild guesstimate. The economic community, the financial community, if they could guess with any kind of precision where they were going to be three years from now, they would really make a lot of money on that kind of information. Nobody knows where it's going to be in three years. Brooks Patterson had made it fashionable to have a three-year budget, but I don't think that's going to help our kids. I don't think it's going to help our adults, and we need those policemen to be able to respond. We're down a lot of officers, and if we could just get some of them back, everyone we can get back, it's going to help a lot. So I would encourage you to shortly just get the numbers on every account we have and compare it with the past and see how much it's bloated now, and quit playing with the kids and with our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Hugh Lynn. Good morning, Mayor Daniels and City Council. I am a resident of Sterling Heights, but I work in Troy. Half my professional years I've been in Troy. I'm a consumer here, and I'm a supporter of Troy Rotary. I always say, being gay is not a choice, but being true to yourself is. It takes a lot of courage for a gay person to come out. For me, it was a long process. Between the years of 12 and 15, I dealt with that emotionally, along with being bullied for being Asian, fat, nerd, braces, glasses, whatever. But you know what? I came to a grassing point that I'm me, and I'm true to myself, and I came out to my high school. It was so empowering for me to come out that my next step was to come out to my parents. That was the scariest part of my life, because I never knew how they would react. My parents disowned me. Mayor, you have a son. What would you do if your son came out to you? Many times during those points, I wanted to kill myself, because I didn't feel I was worth it. During one of my years, my high school had six suicides in one year, or six months. Our dean, our, our school got deemed a suicide high. We would go out of state, and we would say, "Oh, we go here." They're like, "I don't know what that is." Like, "Suicide high?" "Oh, yeah, I know what that's like." Earlier on Facebook today, I saw many people posted Troy as the most bigoted city in the United States. That hurt me, because as the suicides, I knew the people that killed themselves, and I also know the people that got hurt by these words. Mayor, I'm not telling you or asking you what to do. All I ask is that you do the right thing for yourself, for the community, for the state, and for the country. I, I feel forgiveness, and I always forgive, but I don't forget. I always tell my boyfriend, "I can't tell if your forgiveness is sincere unless you do something about it and show your actions afterwards." Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor Daniels. My name is Omar Azat.
I'm sorry.
I'm Omar Azat. I'm 19-years-old, born and raised in Troy. Lived here all my life. I'm a Hamilton Hawk, a Smith Knight, a Troy Colt, and I stand before you a Wayne State Warrior. I'm a Muslim-American, and throughout middle school and high school, I heard it all. It didn't have to be gay. It could be anything. It could be black, it could be white, it didn't matter. And I've heard it, terrorists, I've heard, I've heard queer, I've heard everything. It doesn't matter. And you look behind me, you look around you, we're one of the most diverse cities you'll find. It's, it's hard to find somebody here that is equal to somebody else. They're all, they're all different, but we stand as one. And this council, I stand before you guys, and I stand before you, Mayor Daniels, and you're supposed to represent us in the best way possible. And that post on Facebook obviously didn't, didn't represent us in any possible way. And I'm not going to stand before you and tell you that you need to resign and force you to resign, because I can't do that. I can't stand as one person until you do that. What I can do is just ask you to take one second to look behind me and look at all the people that stood up in front of you, no matter what age, no matter what race, gender, religion, it didn't matter. They stood before you and just asked you the simple question, just look at all of us, as much as you apologize, just look at all of us and just represent us in the best way possible, because we're Troy, one of the best cities in the world. I'm born and raised here, I love this place with all my heart, and I just want you to be able to show the rest of the world that we are. We're Troy, Michigan, we're the amazing Troy, Michigan, the most diverse Troy, Michigan, and all I can ask you is just please show everybody how great we actually are. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Mayor Daniels. I'm Zach Carbone. I currently go to school in Ann Arbor, and I grew up and spent all my school years in Troy. I went to Troy High. I've been around the block there. I know how that goes. But I didn't really have anything prepared, so I'm just kind of going to wing it. I didn't come here with any intent to speak, but I do have to say that as I'm in Ann Arbor and I hear what people have to think of Troy after hearing this incident, I can't help but be ashamed, because I know it's your freedom of speech and all, but you're representing all of us when you speak, because, and I, I just, I'm very ashamed to think that there is some part of the general population that thinks all of us in Troy think the same way. And I don't think of them as queers. I have a lot of gay friends, and I get along with them extremely well, and I love gay people. And I just, I guess, I want to ask of you to put yourself out there to them and get to know them, because they're great people, and hopefully soon, instead of queers, you'll call them friends as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Lizzy, the council, and my old professors, Mr. Zerla, good to see you. I am a resident of McComb Township, Colonel Levine, Wixom, so I know this issue through the controversy it has caused. And sitting through the past four hours and 45 minutes of public comment, I can't help but bring one thing to mind, that we have had a discussion here. And Ms. Daniels, you have had a lot of things said to you and about you, and I'm not here to judge what anyone has said or what you have said, only to say that the comment was inartful. But I think we need to have a perspective on the fact that we're in a country that allows us to have this discussion. There are places that we know of that for merely even the hint or suggestion that someone is homosexual, they are deemed, quote, I'm trying to think of the word, dysfunctional, unquote, and summarily executed. And I'm glad we're not there. I'm glad we could have this discussion, and I'm glad that we also live somewhere where we all realize that to err is human and to forgive divine. I don't claim to be divine. I am very much human. I have erred. I hope to have forgiveness. Forgiveness comes from someone greater than anyone in this room. So that's what I wanted to say to everyone here, is just to take a second to remember that we're talking about a word, a word that is yes, or that we should not use in our popular parlance, a word that can hurt people. But in the end, it is, and yes, words do hurt. I was bullied as a kid for many things, for having glasses, for being tall, for being short, for many other things. Words do have their effect, but the fact that we are here having a discussion, instead of throwing stones or shooting at each other, is a part of the highest honors and our better angels of this country, and I want, everyone takes heart in that. And since I see I have 2:45 left, the other thing that's caught up is the, is the Transit Center. I'm not going to sit here and pretend to be an expert on the issue, just to know that this is federal money, which always comes with strings and never comes with budgets being on time or correct, at least in my experience, and that we say it's going to be a hub for mass transit and for Amtrak and for other things. I know that there are efforts at the federal level to take the government off of backing Amtrak, which would have the effect of basically bankrupting it because of the loss that it incurs that is backed by a federal government. Depending on who wins the election next year, we don't know if that's going to happen or not. Mass transit in Detroit area will always be a problem, because we are not like DC, a city where everyone comes to the center to work and then leaves. Mass transit will always be a problem, because we are not a city that, we're not an area that is centralized. We are very much diversified. We've had a diaspora from the city since before I was born, since before, actually, members on this council were born. And to plan for that long-term future, I think is probably an error. It is my federal tax money that will go to it, at least part of it, so I feel like I have some kind of an issue to speak of it. Other than that, I'd just like to say thank you for letting an outsider speak to you. Thank you for staying here past midnight, showing your dedication to the job you were elected, and to everyone listening, watching, viewing, just remember to have the perspective of that, yes, words matter, yes, words can cause pain, but it's still a lot better than the alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Nick Chariseros?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council.
Bring the microphone down, please.
Evening, Mayor. Evening, members of the council. If you build it, they will come. Does that sound familiar? That's what this Transit Center is all about. Wishful thinking. Their own numbers say our ridership is going to go from 124 all the way to 257 riders a day by 2026. I'm impressed. That's going to bring a hell of a lot of business to Troy. If you build it, they will come. Second question I have is for the city treasurer. Last week, you talked about 21% in the reserve. 21% of what?
Mr. Chair.
What is the number?
Director comments.
Okay. 21% of what? What is the number? Lastly, Dago Bastard, Guinea SOB, and that's not what they used. They didn't use the letters. Greaser. I've been called everything in the book. We've got to get off this political correctness nonsense right away. It's not good for any of us. Yeah, people get hurt, but political correctness is killing this country at the local level, the state level, and the federal level. And it's time to end it. I've been hurt as well as everybody else. I've got cousins that are gay. I've got a niece that are gay. All are great people, but the political correctness nonsense, let's end it here tonight and get rid of it once and for all. Back to the business of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I've got cousins that are gay. I've got a niece that are gay. All are great people. But the political correctness nonsense, let's end it here tonight and get rid of it once and for all. Back to the business of the city. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Bolahan. I've lived since I was three in the city of Troy, gone through the schools. I had really no intention of coming up here to speak at all, so please excuse my fumbling speech here. I think what I'd like to say is, the comments you made are very damaging to a group of people that are still struggling to gain equality and just deal without harassment from multiple people. And I plead with you to take this as an opportunity to do something to improve that, to make up for it. The limelight is on you, and this can be an opportunity to actually work positively in such a way as to help that community which has, by your comments, been terribly hurt. When history looks back on your term in politics and what you've done, please try and make it so that it's not a blot on the pages. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. We'll now move to response and reply to public comments. Does anyone have anything they want to say?
I'll go first if you want.
Councilman Slater?
I think the first thing that I'd like to know, there's been a lot of discussion about what we should do, okay, as a council. So I defer to the city attorney. What recourse does a city council have regarding conduct of a member on council? I think the public may be surprised at what we can do and what we can't do, so that's why I'm asking.
Mayor?
Yes?
No action can be taken without due process, so I think that's the first thing that should be stated. There has to be, before any negative action can be taken by members of council against any of its members, there has to be sufficient due process. So it could not happen tonight. That would not provide enough opportunity and enough notice for that due process to I'm not sure how much more detail, are there specific questions that I can follow up or can ask?
Well, there is resolutions that could be initiated. Is that correct?
In some of the potential things would be a censure or a resolution. That's probably going to be the limit of any power of this council.
I'll defer to somebody else, but I'd like to speak again.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Well, I have another question, as I sat here thinking about this. And luckily, we had so much public comment, so I could pull myself together and actually make a statement, because there was a minute there where I thought maybe it wasn't going to be possible. But I sat there and thought about all this over the weekend and through the emails, the comments we heard tonight. And the fact of the matter is, we have had something in place that guides what we do on council. It's called a code of ethics. And I've signed it, and I know other members of this council have signed a previous one as well, some of the past council members that sat up here with me during my first two years. And I went back to find the most recent one, and I'd like someone to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the date that we signed that was the eighteenth day of October in 2010. So the signatures that I have before me are for the seven members of council that sat here through the beginning of November this year, including a different mayor. I can read it to you if you haven't seen it. I think it's something that obviously everyone believes should apply to the people that are sitting here, without question. I think the most important thing that we need to do is make sure that all of the people that are sitting up here have signed it. So that's, I think, the first and foremost thing that needs to be accomplished, and it needs to be accomplished right away. And while I have the floor, I apologize, but I am just going to go ahead and read this so you can see what I'm talking about, and then I can add a few things that I think we might need to consider in addition. Our code of ethics says that the Troy City Council shall: Respect the confidentiality of privileged information. Recognize that an individual council member has no authority to speak or act for council. Work with other council members to establish effective policies. Delegate authority for the running of the city to the manager and the staff. Encourage the free expression of opinion by all council members. Seek systematic communications between council, staff, and all elements of the community. Render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment, rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups. Make every effort to attend all meetings. Become informed concerning the issues to be considered at each meeting. Avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof. Refrain from using this position for personal benefit nor the benefit of family members or business associates. And this has been signed, like I said, by the seven mayors of, seven council members that sat here as of October eighteenth of 2010. And I don't believe that we've all had an opportunity to re-sign this, so I don't want to put it in perspective to the public that this is proffered and that it wasn't signed, but I'm telling you right now, this is something that I've signed, and this is something that I would sign again today. And I think that as much as I am thoroughly dismayed personally, that we have to add two potential additional topics to this code of ethics, I think that it may be good for the council to discuss, including something that would caution all of our elected officials to refrain from using communication, electronic communication, that may be derogatory. Obviously, I think that it's important that we reemphasize, I wasn't quite aware that it needed to be emphasized in the first place, reemphasize the fact that derogatory speech or hate speeches is not acceptable. And I would ask that all of the members of council sign that code of ethics, whether it's at the next meeting or something sooner is obviously what I would prefer. So I just, I want to finish up by saying that I'm disappointed. And I'm disappointed mostly because I think that we're better than this. I'm proud of the people that came out to speak tonight. I'm proud of the emails that I received, although some of them made me feel really bad about what I'm a part of up here. And I want you to know, that's how I feel personally. I think that we can rectify the situation. You are in your seat because you got voted in by your constituents, and those are the people that ultimately may decide to not vote for you in the future or take some other recourse. But I think in the interim, we have to step up to the plate and take a stand on the fact that something like this cannot be tolerated, and I would encourage the rest of the council members to support signing a code of ethics that states what I brought to light at twelve thirty tonight.
Councilman Fleming?
I think that's an excellent idea, Mayor Proton McGinnis. I think we need to work on that language and possibly improve it and maybe add some things to it. I don't think any of us up here are happy with what's occurred tonight, but as a member of council, I appreciate everybody that came and spoke. We are not a bigoted city. We're not a city of bigots. That's just the fatherest thing from the truth. To characterize Troy as that is just wrong. We're a very diverse community. We come together as a community. We have different ideas, different beliefs. That's what makes us strong. We need to be building on that, not letting this tear us apart, okay? We can all have ideas, but you've got to love each other. That's what the Bible teaches us. You love everybody. God loves everybody. And we have to learn to love. And we may not all agree, but there's no room for name-calling. I really believe, Mayor, that you regret doing that. That occurred back in June. There's no excuse for it, for doing it. I'm not trying to make excuses for you. But I believe, and you and I have had a conversation, I believe you're sincerely apologetic and regret having done that and believe it's inappropriate, but I can't speak for you. You have to convey that yourself. Maybe there are some things you want to do to demonstrate that you're sincerely remorseful about that and regret it. But let me tell you, I've used the word. I don't have it on my Facebook. Years ago, I'm sure I've used the word, I've used other words that I'm not very happy of, pleased about. I believe I've grown, I've changed. I think we all have made mistakes. I regret if I've hurt anyone. I don't think I have, but I regret that, and I feel some of your pain. But to characterize the mayor as being an evil person for having one word on a Facebook blog that goes back to June the twenty-third, that someone had to go and dig out, and someone that did that was not looking for good things, they were apparently looking for something negative, and they found it. Now, I'm not saying it was wrong, that they shouldn't have been looking. I think it's good that it comes to light. I'm not saying that. But the fact that it was brought to light in the media rather than coming to an individual, I hope that as a person, if I do something wrong, I offend you or do anything wrong, or if you offend me, I will come to you. That's biblical. I will come to you as an individual and not to the news media, because that's just got all the hype we have tonight. This could have been settled a totally different way. It was wrong. It was totally wrong, what the mayor said. The word was inappropriate. But the way it's been handled is wrong as well. And so we need to all learn from this, I think. Not to use those words, not to show hate, use hate language. I agree that it's sending the wrong message to our students, and I sincerely hate that. But let's deal with conflict differently. We don't need the news media to bring this out, to come to a resolution. That can be done a much more effective way. But now that it's out here, let's deal with it as a council in an effective and proper way, by setting the proper guidelines and the proper, you know, code of ethics. And so I would support that as well. But man, this has just gotten totally too much exposure unnecessarily, could have been dealt with totally differently. And I hope in the future that we learn from this. This has put our whole city in a negative light that it does not deserve. This city does not deserve this reputation, because that's not what we are. And now the whole country is looking to see what we're going to do, and we have to respond appropriately. And I believe we will, with a code of ethics as a start. Maybe there are other things, too, but I'm open to suggestions.
If there's no other comments, I'm sorry, Councilman Slater?
Yeah, I have a few things. I have a problem with my voice, so please bear with me tonight. You know, we may never know the full extent of the damage that this caused. And I'm going to be the first to let you know that you are not the victim here, okay? The city of Troy is the victim. The citizens, the businesses, that's the victim. You sent me a memo apologizing, but it gave me the sense that you thought you were the victim here. And you are not the victim. The city is the victim, okay? I agree with Mayor Proton McGinnis that because of you, we need to do something with our ethics. So I am upset. I'm embarrassed. And during this whole meeting tonight, I've been angry, okay, because of what I've seen here tonight. Now, it would be easy for me to ask for your resignation, but I don't believe that's something that this council should do. The public elected you, and it's up to the public to make a decision what they want to do here, not us in regards to that. So all I know is that if any city employee would have done this, they would have got fired, okay? No question about it. And in some respects, you're an employee of the city, okay? Maybe even held to a higher standard. And I do hope that you learn from this, but I think the citizens are the ones that are going to have the last word here, okay? And I'm going to leave it up to them, what they want to do. And I'm ready to move on. And just remember that you do have duties and responsibilities and obligations to this city. And I know you're new at this, but this was a serious, serious mistake.
Madam Mayor, this, you know, as somebody who uses Facebook to a greater extent, I can understand how difficult it is to try to find a nugget that somebody has published. And I'm not excusing what you wrote, because I, in the five years that I've been using Facebook, for my business and for personal use, I've never used that kind of language toward any particular group. So I understand the ire that this thing has generated. But to Mr. Fleming's point, it took a lot of time for somebody to go through and find something in your past that you wrote to do this to you, to the city of Troy, and frankly, to the group that was here complaining about the language that was used. And again, I don't excuse the action that caused you to write that, but I also question the motives of the individual that posted that on their Facebook page or on their blog site, because I read that Friday morning. And I was not happy about it. I didn't say anything. I thought, well, we'll let this play out and see what happens. And look, you have Keith Olbermann presenting this as the, you know, the hated, most hated person in America. It's a disgrace. And whoever put this out there should be ashamed of themselves equally as much as you should be ashamed of yourself.
I can't even believe we're even doing this. I can't believe that Mr. Henderson, Councilman Henderson, and quite honest, Councilman Wade, are even referring to who went after this. I don't really care who went after. If there was nothing there for them to find, this, we wouldn't be sitting here. You were wrong. I'm sure you know you're wrong. We embarrassed this city. We know we've lost business in this city over the last two days because of your statements. We got people irritated out here. We got the whole country laughing at us. And we're going to look to who put it on, who went down through Facebook? Who cares? That's not the issue here. Who found it, the fact is they did find it. We got to move on from there. And it's, and I agree, it's nobody else's fault, other than you, Mayor.
I'll be very brief, since everyone has spoken their piece. Yep, it's embarrassment for the city and as mayor, you have a certain special role. Even though it's a weak mayor, form of government, you're still seen as the ceremonial head of our city, and so when something like this happens, it is more than any other official having it. It's seen as the head of the city, and that's disappointing. I would just encourage those people that say they're going to boycott Troy businesses and void Troy for purchasing or whatever, or purchasing their Christmas presents, don't take it out on the business owners, because those people do not necessarily, or they don't agree with what the mayor wrote, and it's not fair to punish them, those folks that are... And it's not fair to punish them, those folks that are doing their work and trying to make a living. What I would say is we need to move forward and maybe what Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis suggests is the right direction. But again, please don't take it out on the city. One person's opinion does not represent all of our 80-plus thousand people that live here. And the last thing we need is to take it out on the businesses that are struggling here because, you know, this isn't the time to do that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Teetz. Anyone else?
You got the last word.
Well, all I can say is I made a comment in a moment that I will regret for a lifetime. I welcomed all your comments. Got me to the heart. I've listened carefully. I've received all the information that you've given me and I'll be a better mayor as a result of it. I thank you for your comments and let's move on to the agenda, please. Next item on the agenda is postponed items. There are none. There are no board and committee appointments. There's a request for a closed session. Have a resolution moved? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
I move the resolution as printed for the Troy City Council to meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268 per NE pending litigation. TR, can I have the correct pronunciation?
Oh, Piperzak.
Piperzak versus Troy.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming. No discussion. Can we have a vote, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
So, we're adjourned to a closed meeting? No?
No, we'll go through the agenda. We'll do the...
Oh, we go through the agenda and then do the closed meeting afterward? Okay. There's an application for the transfer of SDD license to Rite Aid. Is there a resolution?
Mayor?
Yes.
I will move application for transfer of SDD license to Rite Aid of Michigan. Resolution A, transfer of the SDD license and B, the agreement as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis. Vote, please.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is suggested resolution, Resolution 2011-12. Oh, is that Part B? Okay, excuse me. That would be City of Troy Investment Policy and Establishment of Investment Accounts, Item I-5. Is there a resolution? Madam Mayor? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
I move the resolution as printed.
Report.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis, supported by Councilman Slater. Discussion? No discussion. Well, actually, I did have a couple of questions I wanted to ask. Managers, is there a reason why these particular institutions were chosen? I mean, was there something in their makeup that...
I'm going to refer to Mr. Darling to answer that question.
Mr. Darling?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, basically, with our, the organizations that we already have deposits or investments with. So, again, it's staying the course with what we've got. Clearly, we can change the makeup, but these are the financial institutions that, as of course, that we've used in the past. So, we're just reapproving those institutions.
I have a follow-up question. I noticed that some of them have branches in the city of Troy, but I wonder if there's any local Troy institutions that might qualify small businesses like the credit union, like Michigan Catholic Credit Union, that might provide some of these functions. And I'm only saying that because I think it would be nice if we'd enhance Troy businesses in our investments.
Well, again, that's certainly up to the city council of what they want to invest in. Again, they should be looking at the financial institution, you know, as a security, FDIC insured and those type of things. Clearly, as you can see, those are larger institutions, which obviously then helps limit our risk to failure with those institutions. We can clearly add on later if we'd like to, again, as a point of course, put the ones that we've traditionally invested with.
I wonder if we could have some kind of a study of local businesses that might be able to take advantage of our investment potential and opportunities so that we can enhance Troy businesses?
I can get with Mr. Darling and we can see if there's any other financial institutions that fit the criteria that we have to make our investments.
I would like that.
That we could add on to as a resolution, maybe at a later date, but at least start with what we have now.
Okay. Councilman Fleming?
This investment policy has to qualify with the Act 20, you know, Public Act 1943 as amended. So, I'm sure whatever you would bring back, if there were others, and I agree if there are others we could do, but they have to be in compliance with Act 20, Public Act 1943.
Absolutely. And again, it's a matter of creditworthiness of the institutions.
And Mr. Darling and/or Mr. Keith Francis will be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to move the resolution?
It's...
Move and second.
Oh, it was moving second and there was a discussion. I apologize. Vote, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move to Item I-6, a resolution recommending that the state of Michigan require Michigan municipalities to adopt the City of Troy's template for transparency in government. Did someone want to move the resolution? Councilman Fleming?
I'll move that...
Councilman Slater?
Okay. I'll move that resolution as printed. I read through it. I think it's good and really what it's doing, it's asking the state to encourage other Michigan communities to support a similar template to what we're adopting here as far as transparency and putting our financial information online. So, I think that's a good move and I hope that we can do that. Support.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to perform an amendment to strike the words as well as create a database so as to make a comprehensive analysis in the first, be it further resolved. I think, can I get a second? Anyone?
Could you repeat that, please?
So, the, be it further resolved, the first, be it further resolved, the third line, striking the phrase, as well as create a database so as to make a comprehensive analysis.
You would like to strike that?
Yep.
Support? Managers, early?
You know, all mistakes are mine. And that should read, so as to make a comparative analysis. I heard Governor Snyder talk about the importance of taking not just municipalities, but all governmental units and having a basis to compare how one unit performs against another. So, the way it reads now, it's up to you if you want to strike that language, but the word should have been, so as to make a comparative analysis as opposed to a comprehensive analysis with other communities.
So, I'm satisfied with that. So, I'd like to pull back my initial amendment and replace, and my new amendment would be to strike the word comprehensive in line four of the first, be it further resolved, and replace the word comparative. Thank you.
Can we just do a friendly amendment?
I'll second it.
You can, you would need to amend it because it's been moved already.
Did you, okay, so amendment was forwarded by Councilman Teetz and seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bitner? On the amendment?
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes, on the amendment.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
So, now then, you would need to vote on the motion as amended.
Right. Do we have to do the, okay, so we just take a vote now? We don't have discussion? Or do we have any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. We move on to J, Consent Agenda. Were there any items to be removed or this is on items that are not removed for discussion? Are there any items that anyone would suggest that we remove for discussion? Resolution, please?
Mayor, I'm sorry, before you do that, I just want to make sure that it's the minutes as corrected and on the table tonight. I want to make sure that that's clear.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor? I'll move the consent agenda items as printed with the amended minutes that have been put on the table tonight.
Support. Okay. Motion moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Memorandums and future council agenda items. No announcements of public hearings, no memorandums. Move on to council referrals. We have, I'm not sure how we addressed the PowerPoint that was already taken care of, so we can move on to that or beyond that. The proposed amendments to the city, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I do want to speak about the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Because I sent, I sent an email to Mr. Zerlag this, late last night, to provide some additional data to the council regarding more current data. And I think you have a packet of that that was placed on the table tonight. Because one of the things that jumped out at me when I looked at this PowerPoint presentation was that it was, it was all old or dated information, in my opinion. It was from 19, or 2008, 2009. And I know that I've read a ton of information from citizens and I've gotten emails and some from city staff where there was absolutely more current data than was being supplied in the PowerPoint. And, you know, I thought the PowerPoint was full of holes. I thought it was like a Swiss cheese PowerPoint, just full of holes. And I took a bunch of notes with the added information and I could go on here probably for a half an hour disputing most of this PowerPoint. But it's 1:00 in the morning. I think the only thing that I'll say, and if this council wants me to talk about this next time, I'll be happy to, but I spent a lot of time going over this PowerPoint and I've spent a lot of time taking this additional information and going through here. And I would only ask you that, I guess, consider the source and take a look at the data that I've supplied to you. And I think probably one of the more important pages is the first page and it's an executive, it's from the executive office of Governor Snyder. And if you would pay attention to Page 9, it starts with the third paragraph on Page 9. And I'll just read part of it. "In addition, there is significant federal support and momentum for the development of accelerated passenger rail service today. And Michigan has already benefited from that. Provided additional federal funds continue to be available, Michigan will work to develop and support accelerated passenger rail service from Pontiac and Detroit to Chicago and to initiate Ann Arbor to Detroit and Ann Arbor to Howell commuter service rail." In the next paragraph, "Thanks to the swift action of the legislature, Michigan has already successfully garnered $440 million in federal rail funds. This money will be used to improve train stations, acquire state trains, and accelerate rail speeds from Pontiac and Detroit to Chicago. Some of the money will be used to acquire and improve a deteriorating segment of the corridor between Kalamazoo and Dearborn where speeds have actually had to be decreased because of the poor condition of the infrastructure." And this was dated October the 26th, 2011, okay? I can spend a lot of time going through this, but please take a look at the information that was provided. One of the things that was provided to you are what other cities are participating in federal rail projects, where those projects are. And if you take a look at Battle Creek in particular, there's two cities that are ahead of us at this point. And if you take a look at what they're doing, it may give you some insight into at least what this PowerPoint has tried to present. So, I'm not going to take up a whole lot more time, but please do your due diligence. At least take a look at the new information. Thanks.
Mayor, I just want to remind you, it's 12:56 and we still have a closed session to do, so you may need to take additional action.
I don't think we set a time, Madam...
I think we went indefinitely.
Was it indefinitely? Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
And, you know, I just wanted to say something additional on this issue, especially in light of the fact that hopefully we'll be looking at a code of ethics under council referrals potentially at our next meeting. And I know one of the things that is included in there is rendering all decisions based on the available facts. And I have to be honest, I was surprised to see this PowerPoint presentation make its way under council referrals. And not because Mr. Weiss doesn't have the ability to speak to us. Obviously, he did, he was able to communicate, I think, quite clearly what his position was both today and at our last meeting. And we are happy to hear from people with viewpoints on both sides of the issue, like the transit center. We did it all night. We heard from people before and we heard from people that made arguments against. But when I'm looking at the document that was submitted and at the top of it as a council referral, it has your name on it. It was referred by you and it was placed into our public agenda by you. I just wanted to make it known that I had some concerns about the fact that there was a lot of information that was not updated and it was not cited. And that if we're asking our council members to do their own independent research and to make sure that they're looking at all available facts, I am hopeful that outdated information that is not cited is not what is being relied on in this council when they're making a decision on this issue on December 19th. So, I did want to point that out, most importantly, because I think that by taking it out of the public comment realm where Mr. Weiss is free to come and place his opinions into the public record, it's now gone, it's now gone under council referrals. So, your name is permanently attached to that document. You are forwarding it to us and putting it on the agenda, obviously because you want us to see what Mr. Weiss has to say. So, I just want to caution that if there's something in there that you read that was not cited or updated, that before you rely on that information, I would hope that you make sure that you fact check it.
There was a page of references. It was not particularly cited by page number or paragraph, but there was a list of reference materials attached to the PowerPoint. And it wasn't a matter of my relying upon Mr. Weiss. It was a matter of my wanting to provide a different set of information that was factual, whether it was in 2009 or in 2010 or 2011. It doesn't make it unfactual. of the train stations in the immediate area in the state of Michigan. As the police officer pointed, he was very concerned about the level of crime that takes place around transit centers. And I think that that's very important and key information that we should also have at our disposal before we make a decision.
Well, what I can do is, there was a gentleman, I forgot his name, that provided a list of all the cities with an asterisk where he said to call. And as opposed to having you have to do your own work, you can do that if you like, but I'll have staff contact those contact people and their counterparts in the organization. And one of the contacts will be with the police department. And so in addition to the Chamber of Commerce and the manager, we'll see what the police department has to say as well.
Yes, Councilman Slater?
And just, you know, we have our own police staff here that I think could give a better indicator as to the problems around the potential site where this transit center may be. And we may want to call on them at some time, but I believe the gentleman that spoke that had 21 years of experience was speaking about a train depot at Northland Mall. And I don't think it's fair to compare Northland Mall Transit Depot to Grand Saquaw. So I would, I think I would take it with a grain of salt in that comparison that he was trying to use. And if I could just speak about the proposed study session on the city council rules of procedure. It's 1:01 in the morning, and I'm going to move to postpone our study session. I don't particularly have it in me to spend another hour in a study session to discuss the rules tonight. So I'm going to move to postpone. And do I need to have a date specific to do that?
You could, if you'd like. Since it's the rules of procedure, you probably should.